I'm glad we turn to you this morning. We're mindful and thankful for our country, for freedoms we enjoy, and those that protect it. Those are our first responders, those in uniform. Pray you'd watch over them and keep them safe. Today we have business with the county. We pray for Godly wisdom as we make decisions that could affect our constituents, and we pray that good grins that wisdom, yes, to all in the Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Quite a few things on the agenda today. First item of business is our minutes. We had a regular session and also an executive session. Entertaining motion. We don't have any corrections.
Second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Payroll number 11 for calendar year 2021 totals $239,538.4. We had 187 claims totaling $548,520.91. Entertaining motion for financials.
So move.
Second. One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. We will move right to Scott.
I'll make it short and sweet right from here. Seventy-two inmates in jail as of this 20, 24 pretrial Superior, 14 pretrial Circuit, 16 F6, and 11 DOC.
Perfect. Nothing for sale.
Nothing for sale. Tammy Robbins did send me a message the other day where she's living, and she said she thought it was funny because she saw in the paper that sheriff's agency out there was selling Humvee, and she had to chuckle.
Oh, no.
Were they doing it the same way?
I was gonna say, did it take them eight months or whatever it was?
Hopefully it didn't, so they sell it this year.
Legendary. Want to buy it?
We won't forget it too quick, not gonna do it. All right. Next up, we have Mark and team.
All right. Just gonna be me and Garen. How you doing today?
Good, Mark?
Just a little heads up.
Thank you so much.
These guys were, I guess, brought to task for the COVID.
Morning. Thank you.
Side of it, and it dwarfed into something a little bit more, and then kind of came back to the council's bidding to get some numbers. And today, if I haven't misspoke, I apologize, but go from there. It's in your court.
That was a good summary. For the record, my name is Mark Karen. I'm a senior county executive with Amararesco. And with me today, I have Garen Evans, who is our director of engineering here at Amararesco. And I also have Brad Driver, who is our project developer on this particular project. As you know, we've been working on this for almost a year, and over the last four months, really getting into detail, walking through contractors, really defining the scope on here. What we've done is, we've been in sometimes twice a week, conference calls with the sheriff and Karen and his staff, as well as additional site visits with contractors. We've added, there is some scope that was added to this as we went through the development phase on this. As you know, too, in some of our other presentations, there's a lot of this equipment that's original from when the jail was built. So it's 36 years old. Some of it is definitely in need of replacement after 36 years on there. And so we were asked to put together just a brief, one page, but it ended up being two pages is what it ended up doing. But we've got, we just listed out what some of the scope items are on there to make it very, very simple. Garen, do you want to share kind of where we're at on the scope and what we put together?
Yeah. The scope we started with last year, if you recall, we were looking at some roof replacement and controls replacement. Those were kind of the two drivers. And this was actually last summer. And that's where we started from. As we dug into it more, we identified other opportunities for energy and water savings. And one of the things that was brought to our attention with the sheriff was the issues that they have at the jail, especially during COVID, with being able to isolate incoming inmates, you know, the 14-day quarantines. The week we were there, I want to say it was last August, you know, he was having to put people in the isolation, the medical cell, and then the old visitation area. And there were just, it was a shuffling act and closing pods. And if it weren't for the fact that they were able to have some reduced capacity at the time, there's no way they would have been able to handle it. So that led into having Elavatus Architecture, who's on our team, who we've worked with for the last eight months now, to look at redeveloping, remodeling a couple areas, including the visitation, and then the area that actually used to be an outdoor recreation that was converted to indoor recreation a number of years ago, remodeling those areas, and then expansion and remodel of the intake area. So that scope of work is included in this project, as well as a complete roof replacement, water conservation measures for the inmate areas in the cells, LED lighting, and upgrade of the controls, pretty much replacement of the entire mechanical system, with the exception of the chillers and the boilers, which the county's done already up to this point. We have, we're adding fire protection in these remodeled areas, because at the time the jail was built, the sprinkler system wasn't required by code. It is now. So those items, and that would be able to be expanded in the future at some point if need be. If you recall back, let's see, at the end of last year, there was a request to look at expansion of the jail, and there was some options we looked at, like a 50-bed expansion, 75, 100. We went in with Elavatus and got budget pricing for those. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but we'll say they started at around 15 million and went up from there. You know, it's basically like building a new jail for the most part. So this project was always kind of considered the base project, and our approach has been, as it has from the beginning, this is a project that prepares the jail for the next 30-plus years. You know, short of capacity bed expansion, it is everything else that facility requires at this point.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention, too, is you do have, because there was a lot of COVID-related items on here, you do qualify for some American Rescue Plan Act money. We've identified up to about $2.7 million to be used on this, on this project. And so I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, that you could actually buy down the project with some of those dollars.
Well, if I might add, when this project, when we started into this, it was prior to materials skyrocketing. And with that, I mean, it's kind of nice to, with the ARPA funds, to be able to help, like you said, work to buy that down. Unfortunately, I mean, it gets it back to about where it was, but that's the way life is right now.
It's kind of a circle.
It is.
It's set to pumping money into the economy, and that's driving it.
Right. Exactly. And again, I'd like to thank you and Elavatus. I mean, it was, it's been a project to get to where we are today, to look into the different, as council had requested, to go through that. And I think it's very apparent, working with council, and thank you, Chuck. Mike, I see you're back there, too. Thank you. But at this stage of the game where we're at, we do have numbers that are fixed. And how long are they holding those to?
We have until the beginning of August.
Okay.
Is our contract.
So I guess we've done everything we possibly can do at this point, and it's at a stage where if, Mr. President, if you'd entertain a motion to approve of what's been done to this point and move it on to council tomorrow evening for the funding. I know funding is available, and we have that. It's just a matter of, we need to get things in motion so we can get some upon review and some signatures to get this stabilized and moving forward for the sheriff. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the commissioner's responsibility to make sure that building stands and we provide the safety for sheriff and his staff. So I would make that motion, and we approve.
I'll second. You got a second? One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Brad.
All right. Highway is not here, but Nate, you want to speak on their behalf?
Certainly doing my best.
We do have Sean coming aboard.
I'm looking forward.
Tomorrow.
Looking forward to it, actually. No, certainly I'm looking forward to having a supervisor for the guys and keeping on some of the projects. I know there's a couple of projects that he and I will need to be working on for small structure replacement, getting those in the works. Recently updated our chip seal program, so I think we've got an updated five-year program that's now going to be rolling into a six-year program because of what COVID did to us in 2020. Need to get a better rotation established, so looking forward to have, getting his input on a number of different items. So hopefully in two weeks, we'll have a report and have a good feel for what he's gotten himself into. So.
We got five and a half, six months, almost?
I am. Quite a bit, quite a bit to do. So, just an update from my office. Bridge 71 in County Route 2 South, those are the federal aid projects. We're just doing some of that between meetings. So I have your source back for those projects. So I'll total that, turn that over to Endot, and hopefully I'll be able to get an approval, and then I can start the contract negotiations with the selected consultant. So that'll be, that'll be great. I do have, and Blake, that's what's under that binder clip right there, is a proposal from USI for on-call services. That's related to general engineering assessments and engineering services, support services for the county. Up until recently, or up until now, I've used standalone agreements for services specific to design of road or bridge projects. So it's always been project-driven before I'll enter into an agreement with the consultant. But in the case of engineering assessments, usually they're very small agreements, and usually developing those contracts becomes a bit cumbersome for the consultant, saying that's losing money putting those together. So using an agreement like this is a little bit faster for them. They've asked to do that in the past. I've resisted, but in this case, I thought I'll go ahead and bring that up to you. There's no dollar amount set with the on-call contract. So what you want to do is, at the point of actually putting together an engineering assessment, you'll have a one-page description along with a lump sum scope of work that would be embedded under that. This essentially just sets the game plan or the terms of engagement for working with them on future small contracts.
Only thing I'd like is when's it start, when's it expire?
It should be annually, correct. So it should be for the year. So what we do is you establish a new one at the beginning of each year. And in fact, you could have multiples with different consulting firms that you want to work with. This will be the first one that I've presented to you since I've been here. And I would not do, with those agreements, you don't do an actual design because there's liability. This has limited liability scope, so there's different terms there that we engage. But if we're doing an actual bridge project, a road project, you're going to have a standalone agreement that sets those rates, because you'll have a larger scope and a lot more risk associated with it.
Can you see this to the country or even, did you have any questions?
I know what they are. It's like, you know, use it. It doesn't cost you anything.
More than fine.
Yeah, it's just, a lot of times what they do is they take, it helps the engineers with just the little offshoots, you know, that you don't want to deal with.
Yeah. So little things that were, and it would be ideal for the highway department, too, because they've got engineering support services for miscellaneous work, where we want to bring somebody in for like pavement pour, sampling, or just the scoping of some other projects, bringing in for a second opinion on something that maybe I want to get some support on. This would be ideal for that. So this is the first one. If we like using this and it's successful, I may do that more often. If not, we, there's no cost related to county associated with it. So.
Any other comments, questions, discussions? Mike, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion, then accept it.
Second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is that my signature or all three of us?
I think it's just one signature on that. But next item I have is the road conversion petitions. Essentially, that's closed now for 2021. We've got all the applications in for this year. So myself and Lindsay are working on putting together a tally for you. And then the goal is, again, in July, to turn that over to you for consideration on future projects, right-of-way requests, and scheduling of the construction that we might do. So, and that's certainly something I want to review with Sean as well, so we can see what backlog we have of work to try to establish a schedule for the public. Something else, on item four here, you should have received a copy in the packet from Melissa, a letter from Indiana Michigan Power. They are doing some public input and meeting requests, virtual meeting requests for work from the Fort Wayne to Bluffton Transmission Line rebuild project.
Yeah, I called and left a voicemail. He's on vacation. So we cover it together, or else you can cover it, or we can, as long as we're in the loop of know what's going on.
Yeah, I just wanted to check and see who all wanted to be involved as far as officially from the county, if you wanted us to get a working group together, myself working with the area plan. It's just we had until June 8th to put together some sort of response, so before I just kind of went off and spoke on behalf of the entire county on the project.
I was waiting for him to call me back, but I don't think he was due back until today.
Okay.
The way his voicemail.
So I just wanted to bring that up. And with that being June 18th, I think we've got one more. No, it'll be before our next meeting, because we won't meet till the 21st.
So. Can we work together? Lisa, is that okay? Do we have to have a special committee? Or can we, Nate and I work together? Is that okay?
As long as that's all right. I wanted to make sure somebody was putting some sort of response together, if at all. So, good deal. All right. Item number five here, American Rescue Plan. And this is regarding the regional sewer district. This is somewhat out of time to the committee. I've been working with Mike Benover and others, and Steve Higgins and the rest of the group on developing a plan for the use of the county's ARP dollars. And the opportunities come up recently with the state of Indiana, as the Indiana Finance Authority has just issued on Friday a fact sheet on some grant opportunities that go above and beyond the standard regional sewer district financing through SRF. They're looking at matching dollars from the state of up to $100 million across the state for suitable projects, ours being one of them. What I'm requesting is to earmark up to $2 million of the county's ARP money towards matching grant funds. In reviewing this briefly, it appears that the regional sewer district would be eligible from that $2 million for an additional $4 million grant from SRF, or the Indiana Finance Authority. So the goal would be to turn that $2 million into $6 million if we're successful, in addition to the remaining financing that we could pursue for those projects. The goal, unfortunately for us, the sewer district, the board members need to take action on authorizing the engineer to start on work so that they're on time to close on any financing by March of 2022. I know it's kind of an odd request, and it's a small line for a huge number, but if we know that that's the direction that you're looking to go as far as setting your funding, then I can reflect that back to the RSD. And I do have a couple of the board members here in the audience with me today. But I know they're looking at working on, pursuing projects in Craigville, Thompson, Kingsland. And based on the working group, they're looking at also pushing forward projects in Riceburg, Petroleum, and Keystone.
How does that work, Nate, with something in a sewer district like that, that's its own entity, so to speak? Is there, are there any tax ramifications with that versus, I guess where I'm going before you answer that, is because, I guess, you know, I'm all in for the 2.7 that we can max out on the jail. So after that point, I'm supportive of the regional sewer district, once whatevers would be available, just so you know where I'm coming from. But I guess that my, the second part to my, as the first question was asked, since this goes across the board, help me out there a little bit.
Well, I mean, one of the benefits of going through the Indiana Finance Authority for these funds is because you've got certain reporting requirements that you've got to meet to the federal government, that you've used the money appropriately. Because you're using money to pursue the same sort of ARP dollars that the state of Indiana has established, in conversations with Jim McGough, any money that the county puts in, the IFA will do the accounting and reporting for the federal government, because your dollars just get put in the same bucket that theirs are.
Okay.
So any money that's put to the RSD, that's put towards the projects, that receive funding from the Indiana Finance Authority, as far as reporting and record-keeping for Lisa and her office, they're going to cover that protection for your audit. So, but I'm not sure as far as tax, taxing. I mean, you mentioned the tax question.
Yeah, just the only reason, because I know it goes, because we're countywide, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I didn't know how that works. I mean, I know from a building perspective, what we're doing is, you know, is a little maybe different. I just, I'm not opposed to it. I just, I guess, because that's what you've come up with, kind of in your study, Mike.
Figuring out how much money we have total and what's going to be left over.
Yeah.
Because you have to extend water and sewer, the way I understand, where Lisa's for highway garage.
Yep.
And I want to account for needed projects, not to shortchange RSD, but I don't want to shortchange some key things.
Other projects, certainly. So, no, I, that's what I'm looking to try to find out, how much we could try to set aside. I think, and based on the working group, they're looking at up to $2 million, and that's kind of what I had established there as far as this request. That would be more than, that would be adequate, certainly, to develop engineering documents for all six of the project areas, and then some. The goal certainly is to try to maximize the available grant dollars.
Right, right.
The benefit for doing this request to the RSD is you're trying to leverage that against state grant money as well. So what you're trying to do is take the two, let's say $2 million of Wells County's grant, turn it into six, you get up to $4 million of additional state grant dollars spent on the county. That's something I think it's unique to the sewer district itself, that other projects aren't going to be able to certainly do.
The committee, I know when we were sitting and talking there, we talked about $2 million, that first $1 million going to RSD, and the second being continued upon the grant. Is that correct?
Certainly. And if there's conditions like that, that you were looking to put in there, that said, hey, if you're able to get a matching grant for those dollars, then those would be essentially forgiven.
So we talked about, and we felt it was, it would be smart to possibly take $2 million in your market for the RSDs you're talking about, which I think was about half of what you were first looking for. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. So if we're able to use that and leverage that, that'd be, that would be great for the district. It certainly would propel those projects all forward. Certainly, it's going to be a strong lever for us, working jointly with Bluffton. It's my understanding that Bluffton, as far as their use of their ARP dollars, they've been talking about how they're going to use those for their infrastructure projects. So they've been a good partner for us, I think, in talking with Scott and the mayor. Certainly, it seems that that's their goal. And us being good partners, it seems like regionalizing our work together is going to be beneficial overall for both the Bluffton and the RSD.
Sewer is just never really an attractive subject, no matter what you say.
Never is. It isn't. It doesn't smell so bad when you can go and grant money. So, I mean, that's certainly the opportunity. It's certainly a benefit for the district itself to be an avenue. But initially, we had started looking at just the three project areas that were immediate, but it also meant that money was only being spent primarily in Lancaster and just a little bit of Jefferson Township. And then the goal was, well, how do we, how do we move that money around to other regions of the community? And that's where we said that really looking at these three areas to the south was about the best benefit, and was the only shovel-ready work that we felt we could even meet. And so that's why the direction was to go bigger rather than small.
But with ARP funds, there's a deadline to have it spoken for on a project and then utilized and installed.
Correct. In fact, with-
With what you proposed, with what the city just specified to you, will that even work with the south side?
Well, what we're discussing-
I don't want to put us in a corner-
Sure.
That we, a deadline we can't match or meet.
Sure. Well, in discussion with Jim McGough, it sounds like what they would work is try to use our dollars and the state's dollars as early as we can on the first project, and then find ways to, one, design everything so they're shovel-ready, one, so all of our dollars that are earmarked for ARP are spent before the December 2024 deadline. And then whatever work that's been done would be financed, matched with their grant dollars, because the state's got to spend the money as well, but the same timeframe. Then they would come in and try to develop this project. So it's not to guarantee that all six areas will be constructed by the end of 2024. I don't think I'll get that sort of commitment. Certainly, that would be the goal of the funding with-
But again, it's not a project that would get designed, won't have the funds, that becomes stagnant and stale, and then we have to redo.
Yeah. The goal would not be to try to redo the design, redo the engineering. Certainly, the engineering, there's, there is a shelf life to any one of those projects, and it's in SRF's best interest. Certainly, if they've spent grant money, if the state's committed money to a project to pay for design, then they're going to find some way to try to finance that. So really, it would become just a matter of time at that point. We may not finalize it, pursue permits, until we've gotten a commitment from the state, but it's just, unfortunately for us, it's just a matter of timing. If we had paid for the design a year ago, then we wouldn't be in this situation. We're just, right now, for us to close by March of '22, really, we're down to having, let's say, nine months to try to get a project designed, bid permitted, and ready for construction. So that we're constructing these projects this time next year. And that's, we're starting to get very tight, and the grant opportunity right now is probably our best that it's ever going to be.
Right.
If we're going to get matched money, there's going to be two phases of this award. And in talking with the state, there's going to be far fewer communities that are shovel-ready to try to pursue this. If we waited a year to do this, I think the likelihood is zero that we're going to be awarded, because everyone's going to spend the next 12 months getting their applications ready to go. It's sort of a unique situation that we're in, that we're ready as a community, both Bluffton and Wells County, to pursue these funds.
Well, that's key, because the first two projects needs the support of what, and the backing to mesh-
Certainly.
-our project work and their project. We need them, and they need us, by several ways.
Yep, absolutely. And so-
It's got to be a union together.
That, that joint application, that joint process with Bluffton is going to be key to us being able to essentially multiply the ARP dollars that are coming to Wells County and Bluffton.
And how many dollars are that, that you think we might get?
Well, based, if we were to max out the numbers, I mean, if Bluffton were to take their full 2.2, and then Wells County put 2.
No, I mean total, what county, like 4.9?
Well, if-
Five something. Nobody's really come in with it yet.
Well, if we were to put $2 million towards this project, we could turn that into four more, so $6 million more.
Yeah, I understand that. I want to know how much total you think Wells County's getting, ARPA funds.
Oh, total for ARPA? My understanding was, is that Wells County was getting $5.5 million. So, and I-
I don't know. I put it at the top of one of those flyers. We had two different numbers.
Right.
I think the second was 5.6, 5.4.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure of, because, you know.
Yeah, normally we get a list of the dollars and it's segmented out.
Sure.
And we haven't got that. But you're saying, we think it's here, and we want one of these line items, and whether we support, we don't know what the balance-
Correct.
Where it's going to be used, whether it's the jail, whether it's exterior.
So my first response is, while I support the regional sewer district and the group's recommendation, is I'm going to maximize my jail first.
Okay.
Just so you know, that's where I stand. Because that clearly is in the realm of safety to our officers and protect our citizens. The regional sewer district, while it's very important to us, and we move it forward, we can apply funding after that, which I'm all in favor of whatever we can get, but I'm not going to short myself on my project. And then, but whatever we can do after that, I'm okay with. Let's just, you know, but I need to get that down. We need to get that approved tomorrow night and move it forward.
Sure. So I guess the question-
You're not asking for commitment. You're just asking whether we support the $2 million.
Well, the question would be for the district is, the district board is going to have to decide on authorizing their engineer to start doing design. And that's the dilemma for them, is they need to start making commitments on designing contracts, and how much could they authorize, knowing that they've got the backing of the county to finance those contracts? Because their, the goal would not be, would be to use these funds to do that, rather than going back to the county general fund and requesting a line of credit again from that, because they need to pay that one back. That's, the goal is to pay that back here in the next 30 to 45 days.
But if the carrots, the multiplier effect-
Yes.
Is your, is the $2 million request for it to be used as a source for match money, or you just want the $2 million, no strings attached?
Well, then the $2 million as a, as match money would be- Well, then the $2 million as a, as match money would be, certainly as the carrot for the state is going to be the goal. Unfortunately, I've just received, the state just issued their fact sheet Friday. So, it's been sent over to Baker Tilly, Jeff Rao is reviewing this. The goal, or at least hopefully, we'll have, there's the Sewer District Board, a response from them as far as how much grant money they would need from the state. And in July, we'll see what their project priority rankings are and how much money SRF will actually set aside for Wells County.
Did you answer my question?
Well, uh-
That's where I'm going.
I think the answer is, the answer to that question, I guess, is, is both. One, that money would be used to push the projects forward, and two, the money would be applied to this grant to get a multiplier on it. So, as far as what our package would be set up-
Use the scenario that we say, okay, $2 million, but the match is not going to be what we're discussing right now. What happens there? Can we back to match number?
Well, and I guess the question would be is that if you were to say, let's say it's a loan to the district, a forgivable loan. I don't know that you can loan the dollars from ARC. I was, that was a question that I had for Mark Burry, the board attorney, is that, and he also works with Adams County. So, can you loan ARC dollars to the RSD to push the project forward and then they return that money if they're given grants to pursue their projects? If it's forgivable towards the district, then they get a multiplier on it, and then the commissioners could forgive those dollars towards the district? I don't know if that's a possibility. If it is, I mean, so be it.
And when do you, when would you like a decision, other than today?
Well-
Because it's not going to happen for me today.
Well, I understand.
You know that.
Well, the dilemma for the board, certainly, I, I would have to talk to the RSD board as far as when they're able to make a decision on pursuing engineering.
Okay.
Um, if we wait, if the board waits to their regular meeting in July, really, you're, you're starting to run out of time to get the engineering to make sure that they can commit to closing on their projects.
So, let's say that your board decides they think it's going to happen and they want to take the chance of doing it and offering it up. I'm not opposed to giving money.
Sure.
But I'm not going to offer up $2 million when I don't have it yet for something that's not going to get there. You know what I'm saying? I like the match idea. We've played that game for a long time.
Yeah, we've been very successful with that.
Right.
And based on the circumstances we have, I'd, I'd say that we're in a very good position for that.
Right.
So.
But-
I'm looking at it from, if we could say, okay, $2 million, but you guys don't get your four, if you're talking about to get the six.
Mm-hmm.
Where's going to be the trade-off for the dollar amount? Let's say you're only going to get three. So, do we commit a 1.5 out of the two that we're agreeing to at some point?
We're sticking to the two, right?
Yeah.
You still want your $2 million, even though they get 1.5 back.
Yeah.
Right?
And just-
Instead of maximizing, we know it's been good in the past.
It's been good in the past, you don't know how the math is going to work out.
It was, it was $1 million and then the second million was contingent upon final grant.
These other project areas, yeah. So, I mean, if, if you were, if you were more agreeable, say, hey, let's, let's go with one with the option for two at a future time, that certainly would be more than enough for them to move their projects.
How about you do like we normally do, where we say, we give them our blessing to support them, but I don't necessarily have a number yet because we don't have something finalized on the other side? You know what I mean? That doesn't mean, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm good with, it might be $2 million, it might be the 1.5, whatever's available, but I'm not going to give you a number.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
All right.
Because I'm not going to get hooked.
Yeah, so.
I mean, the, the counties, our plan is amendable, making amend that.
Sure.
That's, I'm still on the issue of, do you want two as a, as a pot for your match portion, or you just want the $2 million?
Well, and-
I know you said yes, sometimes.
Well, and we don't get the second part of that till next year, right?
Correct. So, you're still working with 50% of those dollars.
Right.
And, and there's a good portion of the funds that what we're talking about won't have to actually be spent by the RSD until either the end of this year or going into, deep into next year, depending on what the full financing package that the Indiana Finance Authority sets aside. It's just now that the district has been spending some of the loan dollars from, from the county towards engineering services, we're now starting to get the reimbursements back from the state. There's just a lead lag in that process, so.
Well, you are in a position right now where you just want to get some movement to get possible engineering movement before the July meeting.
Yep.
And we are in a position now where we have funding set aside and numbers to go with the jail, so we know we're good with where we're at. You don't know necessarily where that is, you just need some idea of, they're going to give us money so we could go ahead and start the project of engineering.
I think that would probably be our, our first step. If we can do that much, then I think that the board would be safe, and I got a couple of board members, I'm not sure if they want to nod their heads in agreement as far as the-
I, all I would comment on is that taking bold steps early by support from state, and I think that's spoken pretty clearly from the first grant that was made, and the RSD's efforts, of course, to improve water quality. I think we all see that as a real benefit, and obviously, development improves with that as it takes those steps. Now, Nate, Nate threw the long ball for the $2 million, but I think we all recognize that it's going to be very difficult to get these projects done on the front end with getting people to do the work and then giving materials. We see materials now arrived in Liberty and Murray, so I think that it's, it's good for us to be aggressive in our planning, but I think it's, that's correct, Roy, we will have to adapt or modify this plan as it does develop. These, the governmental deadlines that they put on us to estimate where the projects would go and what would be important are very difficult for us to pin down.
Right.
You're right, Kevin, it's very difficult to say, they save as much money, but it might be that much money.
Right.
So, I agree with your assessment, but initially, the board's objective is to say that the county does support the sewer district-
Right.
-and has a positive outlook for its purpose.
Right.
And I think that's a big step.
Yeah, and that, and to your point, that's, I think we're on agreement with that. I mean, we know it's very important to move that forward. And that's why I'm trying to come up with some type of figure that would make you feel good, Nate, about-
Sure.
-moving the ball forward, but as Roy alluded to, the amending the process through it, which would allow us to add more to it. Correct, Roy? With the amended? If we, we start with a number, if we need to-
Maybe change the number.
Correct, that's where I'm going with this.
And I like that.
Yeah, with the amendments as it moves, I just, I'm not going to hang that long ball out there, because I guarantee it won't be caught. You know what I'm saying? It's going to go out of the park. Right? That's what you want.
Well, we'll see what we do.
I know what you want.
All right. It's all, it's all dependent on the ARC funds, anyway.
Correct. Exactly, you're exactly right. That thing can change like the weather.
Absolutely.
These are new projects, not anything already on the board. We're not talking about reducing the, the financial commitment for Timber Ridge or any of the other projects.
Correct, this doesn't change any projects.
New expansion areas.
Yeah, these are new service areas that the district's been looking at for 18 months, essentially, in some of these areas. So, others more recently for the project, but this pushes forward six of the service areas.
I mean, so with everyone on board here, what is, a million dollars feel safe?
I'm in total agreement with that.
With, with the idea, I think that'll still allow, you know, our, our jail project-
And give the flexibility for-
-to give our maximum, we can maximize there, which allows us that with the ability to amend as needed.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Then I want to talk about the second at some point, depending on what we do get. Well, we need basically your group-
Right.
-coming to us and saying, this is the whole plan, so as soon as your-
Right.
-group has the plan.
That's why you guys put me there.
No, I'm definitely part of it.
And then talking about the jails. And I, this was an odd request, certainly, and as I've pointed out, we had to do this early, I know the ARC group isn't really completed with all of their reviews, unfortunately, because of the schedule, the grant opportunity, I think it's pressing, it's pressing the district and, and my need as far as bringing this up early to the commissioners so that they can make sure that we don't lose an opportunity for some matching funds.
Correct me if you feel I'm wrong, but I, I just have this feeling, it's just a matter of time for the state to say, hey, we're going to mandate some stuff, and guess what, you're putting the entire bill.
Oh, it's, history shows us that they will do that. They've done that for other, other granted improvements across the state. Combined Sewer Overflows are an example of that, where they finance with grant dollars of projects, and they did it for probably, oh, 10 to 15 years. And then they turn around and says, well, now you have to deal with just loan. For us to do the projects that we're looking at with loan, alone, you're in the range of $200-plus dollars per month for customers. And so, this-
Right.
It's critical for us to try to get the grant dollars now, because you're talking hundreds of dollars a month for these customers that we're saving, so.
But thank you.
No, absolutely. Hey, thank you very much. Another right of my hand on here is a temporary stop sign. Aucien is working on their 850 North construction project. Part of their phasing the project is to make that a one-way road, so they're going to close one lane at a time while they do their fold-up reclamation project. During that, Aucien is looking at kind of crops and site distances, and what they have decided with their detour route is that they are recommending and requesting the approval of the commissioners to put a stop ahead and stop signs at the intersection of 800 North and 150 East. What they would do is they would be the ones responsible for putting the signs up. I'm requesting that they put a double stop sign and then put essentially either those spinners or LEDs on those as warnings ahead for the public because of the need for that sign, the turning site distances from that stop sign that we have currently to the oncoming traffic, it's really not going to be conducive, there's corn in that field that's going to be coming up. So, we're afraid that by the duration of the project, that that's going to cause some problems for, for the customers, so, for the traveling public. Now, that would only stay there for the duration of their project, but I'm recommending that-
Is that a stone road?
Um, 8 North?
No. 150 East?
150 East, no. No, that's chip seal throughout that. No, so. This was a request from the town manager and the engineer for Aucien for, for that to be installed and-
Um, how long do they anticipate? 30 days, 60 days?
I should have brought their project schedule. I was thinking they had about a 60-day-plus construction schedule for that.
I'm okay with it if you are, Nate.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Second? Second? All favor I?
Aye.
3-0.
Thank you. Certainly, they'll appreciate that as well. On right-of-way dedications, we have six minor subdivisions or minor splits and then one right-of-way related to a bridge project. Just recommending approval on those right-of-ways.
So moved.
Second? All favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
3-0. Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Um-
Not yet.
I had a call regarding maybe the next meeting of looking at a speed limit issue in Aucien out there.
Yes. I've got some, I've got some questions about that as well. I want to talk to the town manager specifically about that.
Okay, that's good.
And I want to do a couple of updates to the speed limit ordinance.
Yeah.
And I'd like to do that, probably do that once a year, just kind of refresh that review where some of the signs are out. I think all the signs are out now from what was done last year.
Right.
And there's a couple areas I think we wanted to look at, the placement of where one zone started or stopped. Nobly, you had a question about one. And then the town marshal was asking about adding some zones to kind of reduce speeds coming into town, and I think we wanted to get some consistency on a couple of speed zones that are adjacent to Aucien with their 25 limit. We've got some just discrepancies that make it a little difficult for them to do in front.
Sure, right. So, my conversation was based on the recommendation to you for a study on what is required and what should be needed, based on your professional experience and knowledge. Okay.
Yep, absolutely. So, we'll look at putting something together in order to do that comprehensively. All right?
Okay.
Good deal. Hey, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Thanks. Okay. Tim, appreciate your patience.
That makes sense, that makes sense. Because it's already-
Good morning.
What we're talking about.
Morning. Jim Ramsey, President of Black County Services, and here to do our annual funding requests and financial review.
Yes, it's all going that way. Yeah, so that, based on the fact of the conversation.
Like showing you, you use-
So, we're all-
All right.
The handouts include our financial statements, including our, our budget, and also, something's been added, is a cash flow statement for the last page of all that, so. And then our frequently asked questions, so. Something unusual about this year compared to the last 15-plus or so, we're actually asking for an increase this time.
Oh, man.
Yeah, we deserve it, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's true.
You do very good work.
So, we've, we've been at $39,312 for 15-plus years, probably. So, asking for an increase of 5%, which is around $1,968, which would bring it to $41,280 annual. So, this is something that's not out of the general fund, but it's actually out of a couple of other buckets that are available in the state. And for 2021, there's mental health appropriation and there's developmental disability appropriation, which, all of those two probably, developmental disability appropriation is what it would come out of, so. I have presented the same information to the Adams County Commissioners and the Adams County Council. It's been approved, and then they go through the process and then the council will actually have a vote on that probably October, and that's how it works in Adams County, I'm not sure how it works here or whatever, so.
Would it mess you up if we put more money in there?
You can't-
You'll never say no, right?
We never say no to money, no, so.
What's, what's the shortage on the LIT? The LIT plan?
$100, and we don't pay that out of LIT anyway.
But we did. I thought, I thought they were in on the list for LIT.
No, yeah, we checked into that.
Okay.
I think that's a qualifying type of deal, so.
How long have we run at your rate that has never really been changed?
Our, one side of our business for our supportive living waiver, I don't think has had an increase since January of 2009.
Yeah.
We've received some, in seventeen, we received some wage increase money, and they're actually looking at that again for us, which only does actually a portion of our business that we do. So, but as far as the financial part of things, I mean, right now, at the end of March, we're nine hundred thousand plus, and the reason for that is because of the P P loan, and also we received some F S S A grant money to the total of about one point two million dollars. Without that, we would have been a loss of about two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So... Some of the challenges that we've had this year is the same as probably everybody else, is the staffing and other things.
Right.
We had, we had actually, we do orientation every couple of weeks because our turnover's usually thirty-five to forty percent in what we do, which is actually below the state average. But yeah, the last few orientations, we didn't have anybody actually show up.
I see signs around town.
Yeah, yeah. So, this past, this, this past orientation, last Monday, we actually had eleven individuals. So, it was shocking, but yeah. Very pleasant surprise, so...
I know.
And the other thing is too, is our group homes. I talked about that in the past. Actually, we filled two of the empty beds, and then the third one's open, but due to staffing concerns or challenges and stuff, we haven't filled that one yet, so...
Why make a motion to approve your request?
I'll second that.
All favor I?
Aye. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great organization.
And that's our regular things. Now you can tack the bottom.
The ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Plan. I have one thing that I need to, the commissioners need to designate a contact person, which is usually the auditor and an authorized representative, which can be me or it can be the Commissioner President. The authorized representative...
Thank you for taking care of that.
As the legal authorities are buying the county...
Train whistleblowing. Motion for the auditor to serve in that capacity.
I'll second that.
All favor I?
Aye. Thank you. Teach you for speaking. Right?
Is that the last step in place before we get the funds?
Yes. Did you have anything else to talk about as far as the ARP?
At this point?
Okay. Next is the Rescue Act Barnes and Thornburg.
Well, contract, and you can see the monthly fee or whatever it was. Right. I mean, we, we hired them, the county hired Barnes and Thornburg to advise them regarding CARES Act, and I think that was a flat seven thousand dollars or something. And when ARP came out, I sent a letter to them saying, are they going to be advising counties on that as well? And they said yes, and they finally got around to sending the engagement letter, so I have no vote on it. I'm just saying if you, if the county wants legal advice in that, that's what they are proposing.
I know they're doing that for other counties, too, so...
What was that total amount per month, remember? Remember seeing it?
I don't know.
Was it twenty-five hundred?
I think it was twenty-five...
Twenty-five hundred a month for the remainder of the year?
Right. Per month through the end of 2021 or such a longer period as desired by the client. And they bill monthly.
So it's only a monthly obligation?
Correct, from what I understand.
How long will we need them?
I don't know. I don't know.
How long will we need them? I don't know. I'd have to look and see what the, what the termination is. I think it's determinable either at any time. Six months would be fifteen grand. My guess is if they turn, if we terminated it, I mean, if we're done, depends on the plan, but, you know, we're, we're at the beginning stages of talking about coming up on a plan, let alone drafting.
So we can wait to do it until we're closer to spending, maybe?
If we don't decide today, I'd probably recommend we do it at the next meeting.
I mean, it's a matter of deciding our plan and then seeing if we're spending those in the appropriate fashion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So...
And just...
How long does that take?
Reassurance of what's done. I don't know. Just, we can reach out to them when we need it, I think. That's what I'd do. They're always going to be ready to...
I think they'll always be willing to take a check.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's pass right now.
Sure.
If we need to, we can bring it up next meeting or first one in July, so...
Sounds good.
Next one we have is the Wells County Farm.
I have nothing for the farm. Do you have anything for the farm? I don't have anything for the farm.
I guess, where are we at right now?
Where we're at now is getting it appraised. I sent a request to Neil Wharton and Rita Gabriel to appraise it. Didn't hear from them, and I sent it again saying, like, like a response, and Neil responded saying he hoped to do it by the end of June, I guess. So that's where we are in terms of selling the county farm as far as appraisals. The, the next step besides, once the appraisals are in, you have to come up with a minimum bid price, and then looking at the procedures for how the county sells real estate, it's got to be, you have to set the terms, you have to publish those terms, and if you recall what we did when we sold the piece of the county farm east of County Home Road, we did receive bids, but the bids were, were opened here in a meeting, and then people were able to raise bids and this and that. The statute says you can also engage, I think they say, a certified auctioneer. It, it's a little different in that, you know, you already got the terms, you already advertised to the newspaper, so you need to consider whether or not you think it would be beneficial to employ a certified auctioneer to handle the auction, which would presumably be the day that you're opening the bids, as well as, I would think, whatever additional publicity that auctioneer might recommend to the county. Statute also says you can, you can pay them a reasonable compensation. So you got two, you got a couple issues, and my thought on that would be send letters to certified auctioneers saying, here's a situation where the commissioners are interested in receiving your proposal and ideas concerning a successful auction of the county farm, including additional advertisements and what you would think a reasonable compensation would be for your services in doing that. I know, I, I had a response from, from one professional in the area, and he has suggested some things as far as an online auction, this and that, and I, I think, fine, that's what you want to do, I believe, is get some creative ideas and then make your decision based on that. I did check the area plan. The one farm north of 350 has got multiple sell-offs available, and the one that's on the south at County Home Road of 350 is, we're going to probably lap an area that's designated as a county cemetery, just, just to be safe, and Cemetery Commission then will be adding it to its, you know, inventory to maintain, you know, in the future, so... That's the next step on the agenda. I've been in contact with Joel Hayne, saying, put us on the list, and, and when you can do the, the field work, I'll get whoever's ever interested in going out there. I know Scott Elsie brought it to my attention, I'm, I'm sure as he would be interested in doing that, and Scott charted out where he thought the location was, and it's kind of a notch in a wooded area south of the county farm. Blake said, well, you've got some woods there. I'm like, I'd carve that, all that out. Make it to the middle of the ditch or something, just kind of like this. So, I mean, we, we can be up for that. Our first thing we need to find out is the appraisal. And Neil and Rita, if we can get that back, it would be great to do something along those first meetings in July, if possible, so... At that time, so we can designate.
And we know from the research a couple of years... It's a way we can look at somebody else, see if they're not so busy, and get it done.
As far as appraisal?
Appraisal, yeah.
That's what you want to do.
I mean, it's kind of important to get it moving. I'm just wondering if everybody right now, it's an industry problem there, but just so busy they can't get out there, you know, thirty days. I don't know. That's not my, that's outside of my bailiwick.
You hear us, too.
Yeah, mind you, so...
I can tell you wait for a while for appraisals.
Oh, I know.
Still crazy, right, Rick?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's busy, but as far as the market right now, I mean, the real, farm real estate market's hot. I mean, it's, it's, we're probably back to levels that we saw in 2014. So, we're, we're right back up at the highs as far as the farm real estate market, and what we've seen in the last six months, you know, six, seven-dollar corn and fourteen to sixteen-dollar soybeans, that'll do it. You know, the, the markets are right back up at the highs. The timing's good, if you're going to, if you're wanting to sell farms, the timing is very good. And I know at the last meeting, there were some comments that, gosh, values could go back up. Well, they've already went back up, to be honest with you. And, you know, if, if, if the county sees a need to, to use some funds, it's not a bad time to sell it all. It's a good time to sell. So, I mean, couldn't they go higher? Sure, anything can go higher. I mean, you can sell a farm, put it in the stock market, it can go higher, but...
Soak my blood pressure.
Yeah, that's not really the business the county's in, so, you know, it is a good time to sell a farm. I mean, you're fine with it.
The, the point of the appraisal is to set a price. I mean, we've got to have an appraised and then... Yeah, we have to have two appraisals, then we have to set a price.
Right.
I would suggest we probably move ourselves better along the schedule if we solicit proposals from auctioneers, if, if you decide you want to employ an auctioneer to get that, because you need to get a date reserved.
Right, yep.
As well as decide on competing ideas as to how to, to market it and make that decision. When the appraisals come in, yes, you need it, that's you send, you're going to set your minimum price, which hopefully, not the minimum price that, based on the appraisal, but the minimum price you will sell it for.
Correct.
And then, and then get going on that, because you need to establish that price for your legal advertising. But there's nothing to stop you from entertaining proposals from certified auctioneers, assuming you want to employ a certified auctioneer to promote the sale. Should we have a second company involved in possible appraisal already?
Take that bull by the horns there.
Neil Wharton and Rita Gabriel.
Okay, so there's two second companies.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, we have... And we used them before on the county garage, and both the Mossburg property and the present county garage.
But you're feeling they're going to be able to get in here in June?
Yes.
Get okay.
That's a message, okay. If we can have it for our July...
I thought that's what you were saying, your six meetings?
So have it by July one. Do you want to talk any further about employing an auctioneer, or you thought it's a good idea, or you want to think about it, or...
Whatever's going to give the county...
I'm not saying decide on one. I'm just saying if you think you're inclined to do that, it would be the time to get proposals. I think we should definitely bring it up at the next meeting.
June 21st?
Yeah.
Is that right, the first, the first?
But you're talking about just exploring it.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
You're talking about just exploring it and talking to some auctioneers.
Yeah.
What I was saying is, if, if you think you might want to decide to employ an auctioneer, it might be good to solicit proposals.
Right.
That doesn't commit you to employing one, it just says, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm most enough to thinking about it. I'd like to see what they have to say as far as recommendations. Do that at the next meeting, and maybe we can bring ideas, bring people, bring companies...
Start exploring a little bit. Okay, that's fine.
On the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nineteenth, not twenty-first?
It's nineteen.
Nineteenth.
Twenty-one last month.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I got the twenty-first.
Well, you guys tell me to be there, I'll be there.
I'll send you a...
Commissioner meeting.
Well, that looks like twenty-first.
It's the nineteenth, isn't it? No, it is the twenty. Yeah, I'm all right, twenty-one. I was looking, July's nineteen.
Gee, twenty-first.
Sorry.
It's okay.
County Home Cemetery.
Funeral that day, just so everyone knows that.
Right. Right. Other than, you know, when we, when we faced this issue a couple of years ago, there's, there's statute that says, you know, county has to own it perpetually, so...
On council's agenda, I put...
Can't sell it, like I'm saying, mark it off, and, and...
I would say...
Wharton has said it's, it's not going to have any value.
Right, right. So, we can have maybe approximation if Joel can get that done by the end, so... All right. Establishing electronic communication policy.
Yeah, and I have that in front of me here. Counties around the state are doing that?
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, so it's...
I wrote the email, and I am on board with it.
I think it's okay.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion for Resolution Number 2021-10.
I'll second that motion.
All favor I?
Aye.
An ordinance...
Just thanks, sir.
Creating an A911 Advisory Board. I can let someone else discuss that as well.
I know it was discussed at the GOP Breakfast after our talker.
Dan Elliott?
Is that right?
Yeah, I think, Mike, you've worked on this pretty thoroughly.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with it.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Twenty twenty-one oh-six.
Oh-six.
I will second that.
All favor I?
Aye. Aye.
I, I think it's timely, at least it sent me an email regarding some concerns about funding, and I, and I did research the State 911 Loan, and statute says local government can't increase the tax on it. But it also has provisions as to what the funds could be used for, and I didn't know if, if communication equipment or things like that might qualify, if there was a shortage for other sources of funding. But I just mentioned that because it's, it's timely to have an advisory board that the 911 loan director can talk to and allow the board and, and talking about those types of concerns.
I don't have anything for the highway garage. Does anybody want to talk about the highway garage?
I got the title insurance commitment after five o'clock on Friday. I quickly looked at it, scanned it, and sent it out to the commissioners. I, I saw, I was air that I'm maybe responsible for in terms of the price. She had looked at the net cash price rather than the total price, so it needs to be adjusted, but that was a minimal adjustment. Other than that, it looked clean. As far as scheduling a closing, there's a mortgage on, so we need a partial release of that. I'm not sure about how the, it's presently farmed, but...
Is it?
Is it farmed now?
Yes, it is farmed right now.
And the tenant knows it's been sold, and it's subject to serious disruption?
Yeah, I actually took control of it, and I planted it myself.
Okay, so...
That would take care of it.
So we're okay with the tenant, then?
I'm, I'm sure we can work out on the right.
So the release, how much time you need for the release?
Uh, I can make a phone call, and it'll be answered.
Okay, so, not a big issue.
No.
But since it's, since it's also a trade, I need to get to you the commitment for the present garage. I don't have that yet, but I told them, told Lori Friday, I said, I need the other one, too, because Mossburgs need to be able to see that and make sure there's no issues there.
I trust you're right.
Well, it's not a trust, I don't even know what it says, because I don't have it. So when I get that, I will send that to you. But other than that, we should be in a position to schedule that for a closing, which would bring up then on the county farm, this, or, or the highway garage project, the rerouting of the drainage. I mean, once, once the county owns it...
Is it a regular meeting, or do we have to have an executive meeting? Does it make a difference?
To...
Close on the property?
I don't think, you've already contracted to buy it. I don't know that we need a...
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't have to do something.
No, all, all we need to do is, is wire the money to the closing agent to close.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Economic Development Plan.
You have a three-year plan for your economic development money. What I have to do is estimate how much will be in that pot to spend over the next three years, and then you, as commissioners, designate how you want to spend that money.
I'd like to have that discussed at the next meeting.
Okay.
There's some things that I've seen, I believe I touched base, some hospital EMA-type of stuff added, that I want to go through and have discussion.
Okay.
So, but that could not be a problem. Put that on the next meeting, please. That draft's really not signature-ready, because it already says what you're short in that, so...
Right, right.
Thank you.
And we decided that was the twenty-first?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, actually. I was right.
And the last one is, I believe, historic society's request?
Yes, they're making a request for 2022 budget that we put in ten thousand dollars again.
So moved.
Second?
Second. All favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
It's been the same request for...
For a while.
Nineteen years, at least.
And that one does come out of your...
That one does come out of that, correct.
That's all I know.
Nothing else?
Anything else.
Okay, Mike? Just... Audience, wide open. There is nothing?
I'll adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you.